Six thirty, Thursday, January twenty fourth, twenty thousand, twenty nineteen. Planning Board, I'll call a meeting to order.
So moved.
Someone accept the agenda, so moved, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, approve minutes.
I move to approve the meeting minutes for January tenth, two thousand nineteen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good job on those.
Counting.
I move to approve the requisition of five thousand seventy-eight dollars and twelve cents to Horstley Witten for inspections at Seaside and Situate. For one thousand three hundred fifty dollars to Merrill Corporation for work on stormwater rates proposal. For four thousand one hundred sixty dollars to Merrill Corporation for inspections at Curtis Estates.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, layas on reports.
There was no Water Resources Committee meeting since we last met. There was the public meeting regarding reservoir expansion, I don't know if any of you guys made it.
Yeah, I was there.
I couldn't make it because the parking lot was totally filled and there was no parking in the Ellis State Lot or on the septic field across the street, so I went home. So, that's what happened with that. And then, well, I was saying-
Well, that was billed as sort of, you know, a water hearing, but it was really just about the reservoir expansion and fish ladder improvements.
Did you get there?
Yeah.
Oh, good, okay.
So, it wasn't really about, you know, development capacity or anything like that. The reservoir expansion is really only designed to provide a little sort of margin for drought conditions. And it's talking about twenty-three days of storage. If they raise the reservoir by a foot and a half, and by the way, they've got a lot of permitting to do before any of that happens. And my guess is they're looking at a couple of years before anything happens there. They're right now developing a draft environmental impact report that has to get filed with the Secretary. And they have to go through the MEPA approval, and then there's multiple permits after that, so they've got a ways to go. And, you know, I didn't see any cost estimates on anything, so.
Yeah.
I left at nine and they were still talking about it, so. And it kind of got diverted to these other issues about why don't we have sort of an overall study of what kind of capacity we have and what kind of developments coming on, and how's that going to address development? The Water Resources Commission was there and they made a nice presentation about conservation efforts. I thought that was good, including the need for individual meters for any dwelling, including multifamily dwellings. And then they sort of previewed this idea of the, of the water bank, you know, and sort of water mitigation as, as developers are developing new projects, finding ways to free up additional capacity on a two-to-one basis or whatever it might be. So, that's kind of where it is. I mean, they've spent a lot of time, and I have to say, the people who did the, did the analytical work on the, on the capacity improvement and all of that, or the reservoir improvement, did some nice work, they had a lot of nice data. They were supposed to post the presentation on, I'm not sure what town, website, but I haven't seen it yet.
I can look into it.
It would be nice if you could rattle somebody's cage about just posting that, because I thought it had a lot of really good information in it.
So, the presentation from the-
From that, yeah. It was pretty long, it must have had fifty or sixty slides in it, right? Including a lot of sort of summary data about where the major uses were and kind of, they did a, you know, a percentile analysis of, of heavy usage essentially, so. It would, I think Kevin sort of led that meeting, so.
Yeah, I'll ask Kevin.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, even if we could post it on the, even if it's not on their website, if they put it on the planning website, that would be good. But they have a ways to go.
Now, what about the fish ladder? Because-
Well, that's part of the project, so. Part of the project and part of what they're pitching is not just a reservoir increase, but an increase that will supply, first of all, they'll rebuild the fish ladders, and second of all, be able to supply them during the key periods of time when the fish are either coming in or going out, basically.
But weren't they releasing some hundreds of thousands of gallons of water at a certain period?
Well, they have to, that's how the fish ladders work.
Right, but they're not working.
Right.
So, they're releasing this water for fish ladders that doesn't work.
Well, I don't know how, how effectively they're working. They're working at some level, but, you know, I don't know how effectively. And the idea was to improve the design, but then also have, out of the reserve, out of the increased supply, have enough water to ensure that the fish ladders work properly. Because they, you know, the idea is you don't want to get to a place where you have to keep cutting off flow to the fish ladder.
Yeah, I think it's a minor thing, they have, as part of the withdrawal permits and state permits for the water, there's like a stream flow level that needs to be met.
There's a plan that was attached to the water permit.
Yeah.
That the DEP approved, and that included providing this kind of, you know, flow to the fish ladders, even, and even identifying kind of when and at what stage you would cut off flows because of, you know, drought conditions or unavailable resources or whatever. But the idea was to build it in a way that you didn't really often get into that situation, as opposed to like every year.
Yeah, yeah.
Right? So.
Well, it just seems unfortunate when we have all of this rain, that it's running over the spillway out to sea.
Well, it'll be the same way if you raise, they're going to raise supposedly the reservoir by a foot and a half, but as soon as it's full, everything has to spill over.
Yep.
And the limit of height, as they laid it out, was really the impact on Route Three, Three A, right? In terms of the impact on the erosion barriers and control of Three A. If it gets any higher, it becomes a, it becomes an issue where they'd have to raise the road, so.
Oh.
So, that's what's limiting.
Thank God.
Wow. Is it a one?
It'll stop. Is this-
But that's what's limiting the height. And then they had to go to MEPA because they were impacting more than five thousand square feet of wetlands. So, they had to go through, they had to do an environmental notification, they've got a scope, they're developing a draft E and I R now that has to be filed at MEPA.
Well, what I don't understand is when they put in the sewer down in Green Bush, that they didn't sewer those few houses that are on, off of Three A, on a common driveway? Those weren't sewered, and they're right on the reservoir. I, I don't quite understand that. They did situate trail on all those little streets, but they didn't-
I don't know.
I don't either.
I don't, I don't have any information on that. And, you know, it's going to take, obviously going to take land, once you, once you raise the level by a foot and a half. But a lot of it's, I think a lot, what's going to happen is a lot of it's wetlands now that at certain times gets relatively submerged, and the same will be the case when they raise it. Maybe more land will get relatively submerged, but as you use the reservoir, then it will drain and, and they will become exposed again. So, they're going to become sort of intermittently submerged. And, you know, there's a lot, a lot to do. I, I think they filed at Concom for, for a permit that got denied, so they appealed it to the DEP, and the DEP sort of put the permit on hold pending the whole MEPA plot process, so. I think there's a long way to go. They've made progress, but they've been in it since two thousand thirteen, which I didn't realize. So, it's been a long time already.
Some things seem to take a lot of time.
Yeah. So, I, I don't think, you know, there's any, first of all, there's probably, even if it were to accomplish tomorrow, there's probably no reason to assume we'd have additional, you know, capacity on a year-to-year basis. It's really more additional margin on a, on a drought situation. And then, second of all, it's going to be a few years before it's even available.
Okay. All right, anybody else?
I, I, I didn't make it to the last couple of ZBA meetings, but I have watched the videos. The, most of it is not really of significant note, they're mostly residential, like Section Six findings and whatnot. But the one thing that we should keep in mind is that the ninety-six through a hundred Stockbridge Road forty B project is, is, they had filed to see whether they're making a modification of the plan and whether it was a substantial change. ZBA has ruled that it is in fact a substantial change. The gist of it is that a seventy-four unit project that was divided up into sixteen buildings is going to be sixty-eight units in thirty-four duplex-style buildings. That also includes modifications, obviously, to the site plan, stormwater, and grading plans. So, they've met twice at the last meeting, there's a little back and forth with applicant regarding whether ZBA should hire an independent peer reviewer to, to review the, the changes to the already, the permitted plan that they had prior. They have, the applicant did agree to pay for a peer review, so the ZBA will have a consultant looking at the changes. And, that's pretty much it, that, I mean, they're-
So, can you just repeat where they're going from and to?
Sure. It's a, they're going from seventy-four units that were in sixteen buildings total to now sixty-eight units in thirty-four duplex-style buildings. Couple of the benefits that the applicant touted with that change was that the height of the structures is going to go from thirty-six, which was non-conforming, to twenty-six. And that, they said there'll be less people, so there'll be less traffic. And I think also the new plan includes, like, maybe half of the parking will be garaged rather than, I don't know what it was before, but.
Is this on town infrastructure, sewer and water?
Uh, that, I'm-
No, I think it has, I think they're having a private, private septic.
It's on town water?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was first approved in like two thousand and three, so it's been a long time in the process.
Yeah, it, it has been, and that was one of, like, some of the butter comments. One of the concerns was that Stockbridge Road has changed, the traffic patterns of Stockbridge Roads has changed a lot since two thousand and three, when the last traffic study was done and the permit was issued. For instance, the train wasn't there. You know, now you get a big slug of traffic flying up, and also, just seems that Stockbridge Road now is a major thoroughfare for people getting from point A to point B at high speeds sometimes. So, the butters are concerned about traffic, but ZBA felt it wasn't really within their right at this point to re-address the traffic. I mean, that's still up to be debated, but I think they would welcome comments from other boards or departments on, on the, on the modifications to the, to the plan. So, I don't know if that's something they want to do. They had mentioned maybe Concom as well, because wetlands at this point, I guess, is the pervia of DEP at this level and not the town Concom, so.
Right.
But they said if Concom wanted to give comments to ZBA, they could do that, so.
Concom did comment that they wanted engineering peer review, and Department of Planning and Development commented that we wanted engineering peer review.
Oh, okay.
So, is there, is there some baseline document that tells us what the changes are and that kind of stuff? I mean, it's kind of hard to comment.
We have something in the office.
Yeah. Is it something you could send us?
No, I don't have an electronic copy.
Bill, you were involved-
You just have a hard copy? That's all?
Wow.
With what?
The original one. You called it situate woods, sitweet something?
Yeah, I think it started out as, it's gone through a bunch of names.
It's gone through a bunch of names, yeah.
Yeah.
I can see if I can get-
It was a seven, seven-line subdivision that they couldn't make work for.
Right. So, is there like a written summary of the changes or something? I mean, the-
Yeah, we have a, we have a hard copy of what was distributed to planning, and I don't know if they got it in electronic format. At the time, they did not.
Okay.
They got it the day before or the day of the meeting last time.
How many units are affordable in there, the forty B?
I'm not sure. I'd imagine the percentage would have to be the same as the initial permit.
I think it's twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent.
I have, I have it on a spreadsheet in the office.
Are they apartments or condos?
I think they're condos.
You said duplex-style buildings, so they're side-by-side doors, that kind of thing?
I think so.
It's been back and forth.
I didn't see any elevations, I think.
You can quickly look at the plans in the office and let me know if you want.
Have you looked at them? I mean, have you identified things you think we ought to?
We commented that there ought to be engineering peer review.
Yeah.
But beyond that, I mean-
Shouldn't there be a traffic study too?
Um, I didn't get into in-depth review at this point.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, it sounded like to me that the agreement that was made, that ZBA did vote on, the motion was that they would retain a consultant to do peer review of, like, drainage, site plan, stormwater management, and changes to impervious surfaces. And they're, they also named a monetary amount of five thousand dollars to, to be given to the town.
For the peer review?
Yeah.
And it sounds like that just scratches the surface.
Yeah, that's not much. Has anybody said anything about the forty B that's going in down on Three A?
The, across from the Pope Safety and that?
No, 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 no.
Oh, Herring Brook Meadow?
Yeah.
Oh, as far as I know, that's, I mean, that's all done. Like, the permitting's done and they're ready to go. I haven't heard any work start up on it, but.
They're building in a puddle.
Yeah, I don't believe they have all their permits. I mean, they've got the permit from the-
The ZBA.
From the ZBA. The units are not on the subsidized housing inventory because it was an old project and it was too, it was too long before they were built. That's the same with a couple of the other, Stockbridge Woods and Walden Woods. Stockbridge Landing now.
Would it ever get onto the inventory at some point?
Um, after they have occupancy permits.
Oh, just on the Stockbridge project, just so we're all aware, they, I mean, they want to get moving on this, and there were, the quote was that, from the applicant, was that they would like to have a shovel in the ground this coming spring, so. Trying to get stuff going.
But it appeared, from what was in the paper and what they had on a big board out in front of all of this, that the single units were already spoken for. It sounded like a pre-sale. So, who knows what they're doing?
Yeah, because that's I don't know, months ago.
Right. Okay. All right. CPC. We're meeting again Tuesday night. The big issue has to do with the fields at the high school. And it's eight to ten million dollar price tag. So, the big discussion is how to pay for it. So, the talk or the discussion was, there's some four million dollars in, in the bank on reserve, whatever. So-
You mean in CPC?
Yes.
That's the, that's the total amount?
No, 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 there's more than that.
Oh.
But this is sort of discretionary. So, what they're thinking of doing, actually is closer to five million, is using that money along with a bond for the remainder of it that would be paid through CPC. So, it would not cost the taxpayers other than the piece that we pay on our taxes every year.
So, the bond would come out of, the amount of money we get to get from CPC?
Yes.
There's enough money there to support that kind of a bond?
I think, do believe.
There's a taxing authority there, right? That's essentially what it would have to secure the bond. Right? Because it, because it's based on tax revenues. I don't think they could do it otherwise. But then that means that CPC as a fund is essentially committed to this over above anything else.
That's the big concern, because there are other things that may or may not come down the pike that CPC will want to fund. But there's, the funds that come in every year through our taxes and the match that comes in from the state, and apparently the state is working on increasing the amount of money for the match, because it hasn't been increased in, I don't know how many years. CPC's been around since oh-three, and now Boston's in the mix. And so, the more cities and towns that are in the mix, the more it's distributed and so on. So, there's a lot facing us in terms of the school, either a new school, add-on to an existing school, all of that is probably at least three to five years out. The Gates Middle School, who knows what's going to happen there? And then the fields. And there has been discussion about the fields since the eighties. And just like water, it's time to do something. I mean, it's all set, it's all ready to go, it's just a question of the money. And how will it be funded? So, we're having a meeting on Tuesday night to hammer it out before we go to advisory selectmen and so on.
Is it a town meeting vote?
Yes, it is. It's a town meeting vote.
How much will that handcuff the CPC on an ongoing basis? It sounds like you're sort of mortgaging the CPC to, you know, you're sort of taking money off the, off the top every year for this. It's a bond, I imagine, it's a fifteen, twenty-year bond, right?
Yeah, but it's even worse than when it's just off the top, because you've already got to fund affordable housing and other components of the city.
That's what I'm saying. First of all, you got to split off-
If you take those out.
Right.
Right? You fund those, and then you're going to come back up and figure out how you're going to bond five million dollars.
No, you-
Well, yeah, if you said there's five million available and it's eight to ten million, I'll bet on the ten. And that would mean you'd have to bond five million dollars, right?
Right.
I thought it was more than ten.
No.
Nope.
There were certain-
You'd bond more because you cripple what you've got left.
Um, the other thing is, there are certain aspects of this renovation, what have you, that CPC cannot pay for. I think it's turf, can't pay for turf. And then the question is, does CPC pay for bleachers, um, there are other things, and-
That claw post, that, yeah, that box.
So, they want town operating capital as well?
From what I understand, the only thing that's going to capital that's been recommended from the school department is a hundred thousand dollars for technology. Everything else has been cut.
I just, I just thought you said you can't pay for turf.
We can't, but they're going to do fundraising, they're going to do-
The project, you'll have to, you'll be seeing the project on February seventh at six-thirty. I've scheduled them from six-thirty to seven-thirty prior to the zoning public hearing.
Steve feels he can't get here at, at six-thirty, so.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not in favor of having a six-thirty meeting every, every time.
Well, then maybe just, how about February seventh and fourteenth, where we've, we have very busy agendas those nights, and we, we advertised for one.
All right.
I mean, six, but that, the fields are coming in to you. And I've allotted a chunk of time before the zoning public hearing so that you can hopefully have a very good discussion.
Huh? Termites? Termites or some mouse is having a problem? My goodness. All right, so, that's what's going on. Anybody else for layas on reports?
No, conservation is really just local stuff, home stuff.
No.
Not very much.
Did you get on the golf course thingy?
No.
No? You applied for it?
Yeah.
And they didn't pick you?
Yeah, I think, apparently, they think I could spend my time better doing other causes.
Okay.
What was the golf course thing?
You come back up and look at it from a long-range aspect, in terms of operation, in terms of kind of programs, the marketing piece of it.
Mm-hmm.
Right, just the, the front, the facade, when you look at it, you know, we get, it needs to be stuffed up.
Huh.
Don't they got a working committee of about seventeen people?
Seventeen? Oh, that's ridiculous.
Okay.
You think, oh. You'll never have a decision.
Well, I don't know about that.
Hmm, okay.
They've got plenty of opportunity.
That's true.
Plus, they got an enterprise fund.
That's also true. All right. Planning and Development report?
Fifty Country Way, Mr. McDougall wants Mr. Gentha to take over the bond for that, and I have a new bond estimate of, I think, around sixty-six thousand dollars. I'm told that they are going to be completing sewer off-site by mid-February. How does the board feel about substituting a bond, or would you like him to come in?
I'm not sure I'm following, so who's, who's taking over the security?
McDougall has, the site contractor has the bond-
Yeah.
On Fifty Country Way, because we put some surety in the decision. Well, he wants more bonding capacity, so he would like the owner, Mr. Gentha, to take over, you know, the, you know, give a new bond.
The owner of what, though?
The owner of Fifty Country Way.
Oh, of the operating facility now?
Yeah.
And so, we would get a, we would have the same bond, just a different?
Right now, we have a bond for five hundred and eighty-seven thousand. The remaining work I had, and McDougall did an estimate, and then I had the consulting engineer review it, and they come up with sixty-six thousand, I think, is their estimate.
Now, can Gentha assume the sixty-six thousand?
Well, they'd have to post the bond.
I can, I can ask them.
Are they saying they want to eliminate the bond, or just-
No, they, they want to swap. I mean, so-
They want to reduce and swap the bond.
Right.
As long as we get a bond for what is the right number, I don't suppose it matters, does it?
I wouldn't think so.
As long as we know who the bond is with and, you know.
All right, so then I'll just-
It doesn't reduce our financial exposure any, right? So, whoever has, is carrying the bond now, hopefully it has the same financial rating as whoever would carry the bond.
I will ask them to pursue it, you know, but it has to be for the amount that the consulting engineer came up with.
Yeah, that's just their number. I think we got to get whatever we think is the right number.
Do you want them to, do you want Gentha to come in and talk to us, or is this something that can be handled by Karen?
Well, I think we'd have to vote on the bond, right? On the change, don't we? Don't we have to approve the change?
I mean-
We have.
You have in the past.
In the past, yeah.
In, we, surety was a condition, certain items had to be bonded as part of your special permit condition. So, I mean, I can, if you want to vote on it, I can find out when they can, you know, do, do some work and have possible bond in here.
Well, we need, we need independent engineer to-
I did, I already had that.
Oh, was that the sixty-six?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you said that was their estimate.
No, their estimate was forty-four.
Oh, okay.
All right, well, pursue it with them, and then we'll set up a time, they can come in and we'll vote on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, we have our, the legal ad for the zoning was in the paper today. I, so the zoning public hearing is the seventh. I believe we're going to be giving you hard copies of the zoning, what we have right now for the draft bylaws.
Okay.
Seaside at Situate was pretty muddy out there today. They have been informed that they're in violation of their SWIP, and Amy and I went out there this afternoon, I went out there this morning with myself and Sean McCarthy, and pointed out that they were having erosion leave the construction by the trailer this afternoon. It was considerably worse in multiple places, so we're meeting out there tomorrow at nine o'clock.
Okay.
And a representative from Toll Brothers will be there, and we're going to basically let them know that you need to take care of the storm water on-site, and it's, it's now.
Okay.
Remediation started this week. They'll be doing, hauling four days a week, Monday through Thursday. It's a company, it, the material's going to someplace in New Hampshire, the firm is out of New York. There were some truck- There were some trucking complaints on that, too. We've had trucking complaints that we try to, you know, address every day when they happen.
When you say complaints, meaning they were going down the wrong routes or something?
No, making right turns on Jericho Road, so that means they had to have gone through the harbor.
Yeah.
Which they're not allowed to do.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they're continuing on site work. They supposedly are going to be starting foundations, they got permits for four, and we're having a meeting definitely next week to talk about inspections and response to drainage issues.
Do we know what, was there a failure of their system, or the system just wasn't designed to handle a big enough rainstorm? Was it like the erosion controls just failed? I'm just curious.
Um, some of the erosion control failed along the front of the property. Some of it is that it probably hasn't been fully captured on-site.
So they just, they needed to improve what their original design was?
They need to improve the original design for construction of the site. So we will be working on that tomorrow. We have multiple accessory dwellings and site plan reviews, and are, we'll be having a public hearing on the 14th for the Drew Company.
All right. It is now 7:00, and we have a public hearing for an accessory dwelling at 185 First Parish Road.
Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
My name is Kelly Dwayne. I'm the resident owner at 185. Also responsible for the preparation of the site plans for CHA. Do we need to wait for...
Nope.
Sorry, I'm listening.
Go ahead.
So what we're proposing, we brought the house back in May, 185. What we're proposing is the construction of an accessory dwelling, 720 square feet, 18 by 40, on a single level. The purpose of this is with Section 530 of the zoning, which allows for, this will be for my in-laws, they're 82, 83 years old. They currently live in Western Mass. Distance for, the life travel from here to there is getting too great, so we'd like to move them out to our parcel in accordance with that, with that portion of the zoning. This will require further action from another board, the ZBA, because it is an existing non-conforming lot. It's non-conforming for its area. It's currently 17,924 square feet, so that's under the required R2, 20,000 square foot requirement. So being an existing non-conforming, Section 810 of your zoning allows for up to 20% increase in your livable area. In this case, we have 1562 in the existing dwelling. This would bring us up, with a 720, it brings us up to 2282, so it's a substantial increase over the 20%. Therefore, we have to go to the ZBA for a special permit, bringing it up to 45%. Site plan that we submitted, existing dwelling, what we're talking about is putting the driveway to the back, crushed down driveway to the back, where they would put their car. There would be a walkway to the, it would be two doorway, two doorways in accordance with the building code for means of egress. One would be in the back of the building, and towards the back of the building, and one would be towards the front. They are both shielded from the road, so that you don't look at the front door as you pass by. And that'll be further shielded by a courtyard area that we would be constructing in our existing driveway. The purpose of that is, we have no area right now, currently, no deck area. We'd like a patio area, so this would be served by both the accessory dwelling and my wife and I. We would be reconfiguring our stairway into our existing house, which really isn't part of this, but the purpose of that is, we're going to do that anyways. We're on a hard rain, we get water coming through our door, so we're going to reconfigure with a little shelter over it. We have parking for four cars, they need one in the event that we have guests. There's certainly ample room. We're providing stormwater management. Roof will go directly into a chamber system. We do have a stormwater permit application in, it's been reviewed by your peer reviewers, valuable engineers. We are responding to their comments now. We will, I think we have until February 1st for you to file with the building inspector, so we'll have something back next week on that. I don't think anything in there is that great. Now, the structure itself, we've been working on that for quite some time, stroll through the neighborhood. We've got a plan that maintains the character of the neighborhood. The whole, the house is 1920s, our surrounding houses are all the same vintage, or similar vintage, some a little older, maybe across the street, a little older. What we're trying to make this look like is an outbuilding, more than that in type siding on the front, so that's the appearance from the road. The remaining sides will be all shingled. There may be some tint to it, we're not sure yet, but upstairs, as you see here, it's a short foot ceiling upstairs. We have very little storage in our basement, it's dry. We want to move most of what we have in our basement to a drier area up above. This area up above will also serve for mechanicals. We do not intend a full foundation on the accessory dwelling.
So, just, just so I'm clear, the living area is on the first floor, the second floor is no living area at all?
Strictly storage and mechanicals. We may have to put some vent work up there to give the, whatever the HVAC may be. So, hence the front, as you can see it from the street, the door is shielded from the front view, it's on the side. Here, the, call them feet, doors to bring some character to it. Rear of the building, this is the front door opening, opens into our backyard. Our existing infrastructure is on the opposite side of the lot. Very new septic system, new tankage. We meet border health requirements for offset from the system. The proposed dwelling is just over the 15-foot setback. The stairway will extend into the setback as allowed by your zoning. That's pretty much it on that. So this, this front face here will actually be screened by the courtyard through plantings and through some charlist-type work, which they presented in the plan up in here. So this is intended to be a screen with some charlist-type work and heavy screening on this side as well. That's pretty much it.
Could you put the photograph back up? So it looks like the abutting properties, they're pretty far away from where you are.
The closest would be...
I mean, close to the accessory dwelling, I'm thinking, right? So, it's pretty far.
Probably this one here.
Yeah.
Our house, just for reference, is 32 feet off the property line.
Uh huh. That's probably 100 feet, yeah. And then the other house in the backyard's pretty far away, too, right?
This is pretty far away here. This is the location of the previous, there was some sort of coop, chicken coop or something like that, and there was a garage there. Included photos of, some Google photos of what it looked like prior to the renovation that earlier in 2001.
Okay. All right, Karen?
Um, so, you, I'll have the information on the accessory dwelling special permit. We are still reviewing the stormwater permit, and they are before the ZBA on February 28th for their Section 6 finding.
Okay. Any comments from the board, Ben?
Um, is the current driveway that's existing, it's gravel?
Uh, yes.
But it's not paved, it's pervious.
It's not paved, it's pervious, correct.
And the continuation of the driveway around back looks like that would also be...
It's going to be similar, it's like a 3/4-inch pebble type stone.
Sure. Okay. And then the one other thing is, could you describe to me just a little bit right now what the kind of existing conditions are, where the proposed dwelling is, and then kind of like out towards the setback limit and stuff like that?
Actually, we have photos of that area, if it would help.
Oh, good. Yep. Worth a thousand words, right?
There was a shed in that area.
Okay.
A shed has been moved to the side.
Right.
Will you be able to get a copy of those photos?
I can give you that.
Okay.
Actually, I'll give you a copy.
So, what am I looking at?
That is at the end of the driveway. Right where the front of the unit would be.
So I'm looking...
Straight into the unit.
This is the house back there, then?
Correct.
You don't plan to take any trees down?
Uh, I don't have, there's one or two trees that I have on that portion of my property, but it's...
Oh, those belong to the neighbor?
Uh, yeah, yep. I have a couple trees back here, but I wouldn't go on taking those.
And this is your shed?
That's my shed.
And that's staying?
That is staying.
And the water?
Water would be Town Water Service. I did call the water department.
Separate water meter?
They didn't want to handle it that way. They wanted to route it through the house.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Hmm. That's different. Normally, you want a separate water meter.
I know. And a separate water meter would be $14,000 today.
Yeah, but the idea was to separate every dwelling, right?
I can ask the water department for a comment, I mean...
Yeah, would you?
Okay. All right. I'm looking, I'm looking at this, and you're having your in-laws park on the side of the accessory apartment, correct, our house. Right, in the back, and then they have to walk around and come up three stairs to get into the residence, correct?
Correct. They park here. This is a tan steel, so it's about 120 feet to the door.
Okay, I would strongly suggest, since I have an elderly parent living with me, that the last thing you need for them as they age are steps. And if there were any other way that you could reconfigure this so that where they park their car, they can turn around and walk right into their house. It's a thought, you know, it doesn't...
We'll certainly look at that and recognize that there are some code issues that we need to abide by. We'll certainly take that on.
Think about that. I mean, it doesn't, it's not a killer here, it's just a thought. Stairs are very difficult as we age.
We had looked at potentially putting an addition onto the house, however, the existing house has about six or seven stairs getting into it, so that prohibits, as you say, it presents an issue.
So what, what set the first floor elevation of this house?
What sets it?
Yeah.
The existing ground and its proximity to the finished floor of the existing house. So we want it somewhat...
So you're trying to match the existing house first floor elevation?
We want it, I don't want to match the existing finished floor because that's up too high, so we want a balance so that their slab is not sitting on the existing ground, that we have at least 12 inches above it. 12 inches is going to put us into about two 6-inch steps, so...
Okay. Patty?
No, no. Nothing, no. Bill?
Just run the day trail. On February 22nd, you're in CBA?
Uh, February 28th.
28.
I believe it's the 28th.
Right, and what about border health? Is that the one I saw the letter on?
They, they have a septic system here, that's a four-bedroom septic system.
Okay.
And so they have a deed restriction, which was included in the materials that you received, and there's only three bedrooms in the primary dwelling and one in the accessory dwelling. So that would take the 440 gallons.
Okay. All set.
Okay, all right.
How, what kind of lighting are you going to have here?
Uh, what do you mean?
Exterior lighting?
Exterior lighting, it would just be over the doors itself, on the entrance doors, so there's two.
So nothing along the driveway as they're coming in?
Uh, there may be some landscape lighting just for, just for this courtyard, soft landscape lighting all down, but it's the last thing I want is a bright area here. As a matter of fact, my neighbor will probably attest to the doorway light is probably a little too bright, because it's just the way they put it in there, it's just a raw bulb.
Mm-hmm.
Supposed to add character, but it doesn't add function, so we want some stuff going down, lighting down. We probably have some soft landscape lighting in here, low voltage lighting. There would be probably like an old barn-style type light hanging over there, both of the doors.
But nothing to light the driveway as they come around to the back?
Nothing to light the driveway as they're coming around. This will most likely be delineated similar to what the existing driveway is delineated with cobble edge.
Not going to be out in the dark, though?
No.
Nope.
Well, to the extent you change your mind, I think we'd want to make sure the lighting is downlighting, that it's not...
Yeah, everything would be down, that's why we're talking about changing our existing lighting.
If you're, if you pull up in the back there, you probably want some kind of light to see the path to go around, but...
All right, um, we are going to have to continue this. So, Karen?
Yeah, we do, we drew up a motion for a continuance to March 14th.
All right, before we continue that, is there anyone here from the public that would like to make a comment on this accessory dwelling?
Can I ask a question?
You certainly may, sir.
If you tell us who you are.
That's right.
My name is Steve Sauer, I'm in 189.
Which is where? Up?
Yep.
On this drawing?
Um, on to the immediate right.
Okay.
I just, can you...
Gotcha.
I, I saw the drawing in relationship to the ground further forward, on the land, but how tall is this building altogether?
Do you have, do you have height on the elevations?
So this one shows it the best in relationship to the existing. This is an 8.9 with the finished, or above the floor, and this is 8 again, it's about 17 feet.
Does, the fact that there's a septic system for four bedrooms, is that if in the future, some future owner tried to turn it into a two-unit rental, that that wouldn't be possible? Is that correct?
No, we'll condition it that it's a single bedroom, and that there will be no expansion of anything on the top floor. Oftentimes, we put that kind of condition in a, in an accessory dwelling permit.
And also, too, it has to, one of the units has to be owner occupied. So, let's say, for whatever reason, they decided to, owner would move into the back... reason, they decided to, owner would move into the back dwelling and then the kids would be in the front. But it has to be owner occupied.
One of the two dwellings?
Yes. Okay. Anybody else? All right, so we have a continuance.
I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for accessory dwelling special permit at 185 First Parish Road until March 14th, 2019 at 7:00 PM, and to continue this type of action profiling with the town clerk until March 29th, 2019.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's that.
Thank you.
I can answer one more question now that I just thought of it. Um, how's the electrical coming in? Is it below ground or is it above?
No, it'll come, actually, it'll come through the house. The panel through the house.
Panel through the house. So it's fed off the main?
It wouldn't be, correct.
Okay.
So there'd be a wire from the main house to?
Underground.
Underground.
Sorry about that. It'd be underground.
But not a separate utility feed? It's gonna come off you. Basically, you're paying the utilities for that.
The electric company hasn't been too cooperative to date. Um, we've been basing this on discussions with, uh, local electrical contractors. There may be two wires coming in. This is where my existing wire comes in.
Mm-hmm.
And that comes down to my meter right here.
Mm-hmm.
There may be two meters here and that goes underground, but I can't get a commitment from that.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you watch this, Ben? Thank you.
Yeah, like, um, I'll, I'll take a hard copy and if you could email for the record.
I just don't have copies of these, so.
Oh, can you send it tomorrow then?
I'll bring them back.
All right.
Thank you. Those are the same photos that are included in the ZBA submittal.
Okay.
If you have it.
Um, no, I don't have the ZBA.
For what?
Submittal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Why are they all that articulate?
All right, our next item is a public meeting at 7:30. So we've got six minutes.
Okay.
Um, while we're waiting, um, just talking about the master plan, uh, plan, if you will, uh, I talked with, um, Brad the other day and we're looking to put together, um, sort of a, a list of potential representatives or constituencies or stakeholders or whatever that would make up the advisory board. Um, so I think Brad's taken an initial cut at that.
Yeah.
But I thought we could, you know, take a look at it and try to make sure we get, um, a good representative sample of people without having a 17-member committee. Um, but also having at least one or two members at large as opposed to, you know, sort of representing a particular, um, organization or something like that. Um, so the idea is that it, it'll probably be sort of towards the end of March before we're ready to have sort of a kickoff meeting, uh, for the master plan and with the notion that, um, what we're trying to do is get it to a place where as the, um, as the summer population comes back, we'll be in a place where we can start to do public, um, you know, public meetings and that kind of thing so we can get as much input as possible, if anybody wants to spend the time during the summer doing that. But that's where we'll get the largest population. So we feel it's important to sort of set up the timing so it works out that way.
Now, are you thinking of including, uh, the different merchant associations, the chamber?
Well, I'm thinking we need stakeholders representing them, right? But if, if there's two or three of those on a 10-member or 11-member board or whatever it is, that's probably too many, right? So what we need to think about is what, what sort of constituencies or stakeholders need to be represented here and is there, and then we need to think about who individually could sort of bring, bring those perspectives to the advisory board anyway.
Okay.
And I'm thinking there needs to be somebody sort of representing the schools, if you will, as kind of a, as some kind of input there, um, sort of, you know, kind of the senior base, if you will. Um, there's probably a lot of constituencies, so we probably gonna have to crosswalk it in order to get somebody who can represent two or three, you know? And, um, so that's where we're headed right now. Um, part of that's driven just by really trying to time it with the town meeting as well and not overwhelm people before the town meeting, if you will. So.
So when are you thinking, I mean, are you thinking about a discussion before the planning board? I mean, to have a discussion during the meeting? Um, and if you are, can you just?
A discussion?
About this advisory committee during a planning board meeting or are you?
I haven't figured that out yet. Right now, we're just trying to put a straw man together to, to say, you know, what, who should really be represented on this committee and, um, there's probably a lot of thinking just to, just to put that list together and then refine it. Um, and I thought we could do that. Just Brad's taking a cut at it, you know?
All right, so you'll get, I mean, you'll let, you'll let us know when we want to have a full board discussion on it so we can.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's just, um, you know, it's background work right now in terms of trying to get something that's worthwhile discussing as opposed to just throw it on the table, you know?
Okay.
Let's have something to work from, to talk from. Um, so I think that's the game plan right now.
Okay.
Um, we have a consultant on board, um, a consulting team actually on board.
Yeah.
And so they'll be really developing, hopefully in concert with this, developing a schedule and game plan that goes along with that.
Well, we have, just off the top of my head, North Situate, Green Bush, the Harbor, Homarock, schools, the seniors. Um, somebody like Glenn Wilder would be perfect for North Situate. And, you know, somebody that would represent, well, that's Brad, he's EDC. So, I mean, it's, um.
Yeah, I think there's, there's probably a lot of ways to slice and dice this, right? We just need to make sure, um, it's comprehensive enough, right? Because I wanna make sure we have some kind of, um, conservation environmental representative, whether that's the North and South River watershed or somebody else from conservation or whatever it is. But, you know, we need to, need to make sure we have sort of all the components addressed. Probably need somebody to really think about the town infrastructure, right?
DPW.
Um, and, and it's not to say that, you know, this, this ends up being sort of an advisory committee and I would think they're gonna be working staff committees after that. I think that's what we talked, what I talked to Brad about a little bit is, you know, I would think the DPW and the planning department and conservation and, and all of the town staff are gonna have, uh, a fair amount of work to do on that as well. So, um, you just can't put all of them on a advisory committee. You're gonna end up with 30 people, you know? So, and I, I think we need to be in that, my guess is 10 to 12 range. I don't know. How, how many did you have the last time? Or did you have an advisory committee?
It started out bigger and it got smaller, but yeah, probably ended up about 12.
12? That was kind of my gut was if you get to 15 or 20, it's getting way too big.
It's not manageable.
Yeah.
But the key is cross-training because you get a different viewpoint than you would somebody that's just, that's their only, their only.
Yeah, that was kind of my point is you kind of want that cross-connection.
Yep.
Okay. All right, it is seven. Thank you, Steve. It's 7:30. We're having a public meeting for a site plan administrative review at 87 Glades Road.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, for the record, my name is James Garfield. I'm an engineer, Morse engineer, um, representing Doris Carey and Dennis Bedore for the site plan, um, administrative review for 87 Glades Road. So to familiarize yourself with the plan here, um, we've got our property lines outlined in bold and Glades Road is down at the bottom of the page. Uh, so as the site currently sits, we've got a four-unit, eight-bedroom apartment building, which is currently existing, non-conforming, and it sits currently in pretty poor condition. We've got a couple of site pictures here I'll pass on to you guys. Um, the existing building's non-conforming in regards to property line setbacks and actually encroaches onto the, the butter to the north, just here. Um, the building's also non-conforming in regards to the FEMA flood zone. Uh, the first floor sits at elevation 10.2 and the FEMA flood zone elevation is 15. Um, and then in terms of parking, we've got an area at the rear of the site which currently parks about two cars. And what we're proposing to do is to construct a new building, which will be a three-unit, six-bedroom apartment building up on piles. The first floor would be at elevation 18 and a half, which would be three and a half feet above the FEMA flood zone. And, uh, by raising the building up like that, we'll also have, uh, room to park four cars between the piles underneath the building. And we will also still maintain the two parking spaces to the rear, which will now be below the proposed deck. Um, in terms of the actual layout of the apartment building.
Is that the parking lot behind it? Is that the town parking lot behind it now?
No.
No? Where is that? Right here, right?
You know where the parking lot is that we turn around?
This is just further down the block, I got it.
To the left, it's to the left.
So, um, in terms of the actual layout of the apartment building, um, it's gonna consist of, as I said, three units, which will pretty much be the exact same floor plans throughout. Um, it'll consist of two bedrooms with about 1,009 square feet of living area. And, um, you can note that the ZBA had a unanimous approval of this plan already. Um, and we're also aware that this will be continued tonight due to pending Board of Health approval, but we wanted to present the project tonight just to get some feedback. And if you have any comments, we can address them at the next meeting, which will be held in February. So with that, I will leave.
Is this always, according to the registry, or the assessor, has always been a four-unit?
Yes. I've owned it since 83.
Okay.
And it is one of the few legitimate four-family units in the town. And it has always been that. It was, you know, divided when it was built.
Okay. And you're Doris Carey?
Yes, I am.
And you own the, that's Glades Road. Okay, gotcha. It's a pretty small lot.
I know.
So the mass of the building is getting much larger on this lot?
It's going way up.
Right, because there, you don't have these, these porches. Looks like there's sort of a half addition with porches over it and stuff?
Footprint is the same.
That's what I meant, but the building mass is larger.
While the second floor currently, um, has a full deck and goes out and the third floor deck comes out over the second floor. So, I mean.
Right, that's, that's what I'm looking at, right?
Yeah.
But this is gonna have building all the way up?
Correct.
Forty-eight feet.
Forty-eight?
It's within the town specifications.
Forty feet.
Forty feet, okay.
The reason for the additional three feet on the flood is because if we were to build this building just to the 15 feet required, there is no break in your flood insurance. I do flood insurance for Situate and Marshfield have been very active in the CRS program for the town of Situate. And if you go three feet to four feet higher, and a half a foot counts as a fourth, a four-foot height, um, you actually, the flood insurance for this building, um, believe it or not, should be well under $1,000 versus $3,000 a year. So, um, it's definitely, and the other thing about going the additional footage, which is positive for people, is, you know, there's, you know, the whole thing of sea level rise and all that, um, those kind of things, you have no way of knowing what the future might be. So, uh, this puts.
It might not be high enough.
Well, I'm, you're gonna be a lot better off at three and a half feet higher than the original number.
Six feet.
So that's the reason for people to do it. They want their insurance to go down.
So the bottom floor has walls on it?
That.
Um, if it's on pilings, why isn't it sort of open?
Well, it is open, but it's just, uh, you know, it's what they would call skirting, you know, around it. You can do that legally. It has to have a space of, uh, I think it's an inch and a half between the boards, but.
Oh, so these are, this is like lattice work or something?
Yes, it's, it, that's what it will ultimately be, yeah.
But not the garage doors, though?
Well, it's shown with garage doors. This is an A-zone, not a V-zone property.
Are those garage doors? Is that what I'm looking at?
What?
Are those garage doors?
Yes, that's what they, yeah. It, you know, that's up to, they could leave it wide open, whichever they prefer. I'm gonna.
Are these going to be rentals or are you selling them as condos?
We would, uh, be selling them probably as condos.
And you have, on the, the top floor, the attic, there's a kitchen and?
The third floor right now is one of the larger apartments.
No, what's, the last page?
Maybe a little attic storage or something, but livable space.
What am I looking at? A6. I don't know.
It's just, it's just gonna be, um, a storage area. There's no livable space up there.
Okay.
Six looks like the roof plan.
Yeah, all right.
It's just showing the slopes on the plan.
Yeah.
And the roof.
Okay. All right. Ben?
Um, can we talk a little bit more about this kind of alley area where the proposed, uh, so there's a 10-foot right-of-way and it looks like that's where some of the absorption system's gonna go?
Um, the 10-foot right-of-way is the access to, not only to the back parking, yeah, that's it, to go into the back parking, but there's also, uh, two more properties that use that access as a right-of-way. The system that's in the, um, uh, the right-of-way actually goes to the house next door. It hasn't anything to do with this plan and that was done way back in 83, um, when we bought the property. That was the only place we could locate it. The new septic system is, the tank is, uh, right there, yep. And then the, uh, chamber will run underneath the house. And I think there's six or eight chambers that are going in. I mean, it's, uh, you know, a really, uh, a good system.
So the, so this right-of-way, um, just to clarify from, is the right-of-way for your property to access the rear?
Correct.
Okay.
And the, and neighbors and all of that, yeah.
It's a common right-of-way, right?
Yeah. And then, and the septic is for the next, house next door?
Yes, it is. Yep.
Um, so my, my main, I guess, comment looking at the plan is really the, has to do with the massing of the structure. Um, the square footage is going to be increased by 22.4% according to the plan and just kind of the layout of the building is getting much larger and more, it, it's gonna be very dominating in that, since that, knowing this area, it's like a lot of little row houses.
Uh, actually not. Uh, one house after that is a three-story and they went from, uh, I would say like a story and a half, they weren't even a three-story.
Minefield store was.
It went right up. No, going the other way, ninety, number, uh, 91. And, um, and then of course, where the store used to be, they've gone up to three stories. And then, of course, we're right across from the Mined Inn and the houses across the way from us are already, um, large, uh, you know, homes that are, that used to be much smaller. from us are already large, you know, homes that are, that used to be much smaller. I mean, I remember when they were the cottages of the neighborhood, this was always one of the larger houses, and to me, I mean, it's, the whole deck used to be covered with a roof, so, on the second floor. We did it with stairs, we didn't put in as much of a roof, you know? We put, had to put stairs, and it never had one. We bought the house, there was no actual, there was only one access, not two. Now it has two, and doing those stairs, we took off a portion of the roof.
Okay, my only, to other board members' only concern, and why I brought it up, was whether this, being a multi-family, should potentially be reviewed by Design Review Committee in terms of how it fits the looking to the abutting, the butters and stuff. That's all I have.
Okay. Steve?
I would echo Ben's comments on that, in terms of the massing. It just feels like it's going to be a bigger monolith here, and will sort of change things. And it also looks like it's going to be pretty straight up and down. And I think, given that we have a design review committee, and that's part of what we ask them to do, I would, I would ask them to take a look at this.
I agree, and the massing, especially with the two houses in back of you, right?
No, they're not in back of us. They're to the, the driveway goes in, they go left to their properties, we're to the right side, and there's, is a vacant lot that's been vacant since the house burned down in, I think, the 1930s or 40s.
Did any water down there today?
What?
Any water?
No, no, I talked to the people in the house, and they were A-OK. The marsh was filled with water in back, though.
That's a big, it's a big piece of property. It's obviously the biggest one down there. It's some, I, and it blends right now, and I'm afraid that if it, if we don't go before design review, it's going to stick out like a sore thumb if we don't kind of...
I think it's going to enhance the neighborhood, truthfully, because the structure that's there is really old, and we have done what we could. I mean, we've re, since we bought the house, we have done everything over in there, wiring, all of it, you know, and the exterior as well, but it's a really old structure, and that is its problems, and it needs a new structure on that property.
Bill?
Yeah, no, I wouldn't argue the new structure, or the benefits of it, but it's massive.
Uh-huh.
And I think that having a design review, take a look at it, it may very well be very, something very simple that could, you know, break up at least the visible mass when you look at it.
Can we make sure that they do that long look that they're supposed to do, which they do on First Parish, that they look at the whole neighborhood, so it kind of fits in?
Yep. My concern, too, is this will certainly dwarf the little itty-bitty house that's right next door.
No, it won't, because that one's already been allowed to be developed and to go, that's going to three stories as well.
You're kidding.
No, so the two of them will be side by side.
91?
And, and so, I mean, it's, it's not going to dwarf it at all.
Has that already been permitted?
I'm in the process of getting the permit, but it's, it's been through zoning...
Oh, it's your house?
Yes, I own that property as well.
Oh, okay. That's what I was going to say.
Wait a minute, excuse me, which property do you own?
85 Glades Road as well.
All right, because...
I'm talking about 91.
Yeah, she's talking about 91.
Oh, 91, but if you were, if you were to go and look at 91, 91's a three-story building. It's 89.
89, excuse me.
And they own the two pieces there, and they had no problem going to a three-story building.
So this little house...
But that's not going. Is that changing?
Is this little house, whose little house is that?
That's, that is 89, but right next to that, they own, is 91, and that's a three-story building that goes all the way up.
But this little house is going to be dwarfed by both...
Well, it is now. It's really not going to be that much higher than it is right now.
Get more of a wall.
And that's the solid wall already.
That's what you're going to end up with, right? Which is...
And that's the solid wall. I mean, you know...
It's going to be like an alley going down towards it.
Correct.
Yeah.
I did get a comment late this afternoon from the John Campbell and Mary Teagan, owners of 81 and 91 Glades, and they were mostly concerned regarding the septic system.
With respect to...
That the septic system, it's very close to their property, and the leaching field is, the elevation of the septic tank, raising the grade level over three feet for the existing 7 feet 8 inch benchmark will cause additional flooding and damage to their property. They, they say that they...
There is no leaching field here, is there?
No, there's...
It's a tight tank, right? There is leaching field?
We're going through the Board of Health right now to propose a new one. Currently, this, the building's just serviced by a tight tank, actually, shown on this plan.
Oh, so yeah, we need to hear from the Board of Health.
Yeah, we have heard from the Board of Health, and what happened is they need to go back to the Board of Health, because right now, the design is, they may have to drop a bedroom.
Is the, the new design is, is that the one that's encroaching on the right-of-way there?
No, that, no, no, it's under, it's going to be under, or the back is, he indicated, but they were asking for variances from Title V, and they're, they may not be getting those variances. They have to go back to the Board of Health on Monday night and discuss those.
Okay.
There also, I believe, Conservation is meeting on it next week, and I was going to ask the Board if they wanted this to go to a Design Review Committee.
Yes.
Definitely.
I think it's, the consensus is, it goes to Design Review.
And so you guys are concerned about the massing and how it fits into the neighborhood?
Yes.
Yep.
And it's right on the street.
Yeah, so the, sort of the long view perspective would be helpful to see, not just the house itself, but how it fits into the row there.
Okay. All right, is there anybody in the audience that would like to say something?
Hi, my name is Joe Joyce, 39 Ocean Ave, property owner of 83 Glades Road.
Which is where?
The property to the left of 85, and the property behind this, you know, the back of this property.
So is that this house right here? Just so I'm clear?
No, that's, that's 85. I'd be to the left of that. It's also a small house.
Okay.
And also, that right-of-way that goes to the back, we have that right-of-way, the leads to the back, that's where Billy Stephen lives, the house back there.
Okay.
So, number one, I first say, we're all for them doing a, doing this building over, taking it down. All the properties down there need, really should be updated. Everything should be elevated around Situate, that are on the water, so I understand that. The massing, that, that's all, those are very good comments for the Design Review Committee to look at. The only thing that I bring up at this time, I'm in support of what she does. We are waiting to find out what their plan will be, then we'll design something, do something with the property behind it, and the property that we own to the left of it. We'll be taking those down. So, we need to wait to understand how we should design it, because there are water issues there. We're familiar with that, we've been there our whole life, down in Minnit, we're familiar with what we're doing. But we support it. I have a few questions that would be helpful for everybody, and this will be coming to you. The bench mark that you're using, and you're using a 7.8 on the abutting property?
May I look at the plan?
Yeah. Right back there.
Let's see here. Not sure if this is the most updated one.
That's fine, and you could take a look at it. What I'd suggest would be helpful for everybody is, and I know you have this, if we had the grade at the road...
You know, Mr. Joyce...
Yeah, write that to you.
Yes, if you have...
We had the grades.
Right, if we had the grades, if you have a laundry list of questions, then I would suggest that you submit them to the Board, and we can pass them on to the engineer, and make sure that when we meet again, your questions are answered.
That'd be great. And the other, would you like me to comment more on something else, or just...
No, you may, no, go ahead.
Okay, the other is the septic. I'm all for it. There's always been a problem down there with that septic. It's been leaching for decades. But you have to look at that, because if it's, if the grade is, we need to know what the grade is, what the grade will be, because if these infiltrators would be set at 9 to 11, as the plan calls for, you need to understand what...
Okay, that is something that you will have to discuss Monday night with the Board of Health.
Okay.
All right, that is their purview, and whatever they come up with, it has nothing...
Could I ask a clarifying question about this? Septic's been leaching for decades?
This septic, this is brand-new?
This is a new system.
No, no, I get that.
And it wasn't...
My question was, are you talking about the septic field under the right-of-way?
No, no, that one doesn't, that doesn't leach.
So that's fine, okay.
It was the one for the four-family. So I want you to know, I'm in support of it. I think you'll find most neighbors are in support of it. I've chatted with people down here, we're all in support of it. I think everyone would be. It's just, what's the end product? And we want to develop, we don't want to have problems with what we develop. I don't want them to have problems, and so...
No one wants problems, Mr. Joyce.
Yeah, exactly.
No one.
I'll get to you with the comments I have, and I'll get to the health meeting on Monday night.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Can I ask a question, just of our proponent here? So, we were just talking about the grading of the property. Do you plan to regrade the property at all when you tear it down?
To my knowledge, the grade's not going to change.
Okay.
The grade we've always tried to maintain is right level with the street, and then it dips down as it goes back, but that's been the grade that was there when we bought it. I'm planning to tower underneath the house, I'm just going to leave that stone.
Karen, any comments?
No, it's just we, I think we need a continuance, which I advised them earlier in the day, because we, the Board of Health has to weigh in on this before you can determine a site plan review, and I thought you might want design review as well. I do not know when I can schedule a design review, but, I mean, I, we did a draft motion to continue to February 14th. Or if you think that I can, the next available time is February 28th.
Do it February 28th, okay.
Yeah, I don't think the Design Review Committee is going to be that quick in scheduling, do you?
Would we be able to attend the Design Review?
Of course, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, we'll let you know after we...
I'll have Dick Rockwood, our architect, come in.
Yeah, we'll let you know when it's, when it's scheduled, yeah.
The 14th would obviously be better for me. This has been, at this point, over 18 months. So, we're going, we're heading for the two-year mark.
I hear you, realizing that this is, this is the first week for us.
And my tight tank is 630 a month. 630 a month for the tight tank.
Wow.
Yeah, I just thought you ought to know that.
Okay.
In case you've got anybody else that's getting stuck with a tight tank.
Well, I would continue it to the 28th, and if, you know, the stars align, and there's a spot on the 14th, then we can do it, but it's really up to whether the Design Review Committee can get together and do this and provide us feedback before then.
Okay, we have a motion?
I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the accessory dwelling special permit at...
That's the wrong one.
That's the wrong one. Hello? That's five. Close enough.
I got...
You have to change, you have to change the date.
Is this, what's going to when?
It's called Amaraeska.
My birthday, I don't forget that day.
Oh, happy birthday, there you go.
In advance.
Why don't we say February 28th, why don't we go 7 o'clock?
Yeah.
No sooner than.
I move to accept the applicant's request to continue, to continue the public meeting for the site plan administrative review for 87 Glades Road until February 28th at 7:00 PM, and to continue the time for action provided with the town clerk until...
March 15th.
March 15th, 2019.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All Glades Road is going to be changed, is all going to be all updated, post office included? No?
In the future.
We'll raise the payment up 10 feet.
It's all under watch. See him now, tell us anything.
Okay. Is this yours or mine?
I think that's mine, but I'm just going to recycle it in.
Okay. All right, is there anything else that we need to go over tonight?
I don't think so. The dates of town meeting are April 8th and probably April 9th.
Oh, my.
Wow.
Think it's going to carry over?
Um...
How many articles on the...
I don't, I don't know. I just heard that it's probably going to be two nights.
It's a lot of heavy debate.
Yeah, there's a lot of heavy debate issues.
April 8th?
What time?
7.
And our meeting on the February 7th for, is going to be at the EOC.
Okay, and that unfortunately is at 6:30, Darren, sorry. And what about the 14th? What time is that one?
Well, we put 6:30 for, we have an accessory dwelling unit first.
Has that been published already?
It's been posted.
It's been posted, but it hasn't been published yet.
But the, posted, and the abutting notification's been sent.
Okay.
I'm not sure I can make that, I'll just have to wait and see.
All right, well, we did the athletic fields first to have the public hearing for the zoning afterwards.
On 7?
At 7:30.
Right.
So that, there would be plenty of time for the public hearing for the zoning.
And that's at 6:30, right?
No.
The meeting itself is, starts at 6:30.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So you're saying the meeting on the, the next one after that is still 6:30?
Yes.
There's just so much on the docket. That's part of the problem.
Well, doesn't change my scheduling problem.
All right, I'll entertain Bill's motion.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 We are adjourned. I'm also having...